Call the planning board meeting March sixteenth, twenty twenty one to order. As a result of the COVID nineteen virus, the planning board will conduct the meeting via remote access as provided by main law. The planning board will use Zoom meeting to conduct the meeting and to allow the public to remotely attend and participate. Zoom will allow all planning board members, applicants and members of the public to hear all discussion, hear votes, which will be taken by rule call as required by law. Please use, okay, so first order of business is the approval of the meeting minutes from January nineteenth, twenty twenty one. Do I have a motion or any comments?
Motion, we approve the minutes from the January nineteen, twenty twenty one meeting.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any comments? Maureen, please call the roll.
Certainly, and I believe Mr. Bedensky is just about to join us.
Okay, you can start.
Yeah, hi, guys. I didn't get the invite, so I joined through the town portal, just so you know.
Okay, so there's just been a motion to approve the minutes. Are you feel ready to vote, Mr. Bedensky?
Sure, I, yes.
Mr. Gilbert?
Yes.
Ms. Jordan?
Yes.
Ms. Lynch?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Sarbeck?
Yes.
Chair Hubner?
Yes. Okay, motion carries unanimous. Next item of business is the Astrolane private road amendment. Introduction Maggie Berlum is requesting amendments to a planning board approval granted October fifteenth, two thousand nineteen. Amendments including amendments include adding surface pavement to the previously approved gravel private road, relocating the eight Astrolane driveway to a portion of Astrolane that has not been approved as a private road, replacing the private road sign with a no outlet sign, and adding fencing to the activities allowed outside the building envelope. The application will be considered for completeness in a public hearing. The plan will be reviewed under section sixteen dash two dash three of the subdivision ordinance. And that's Maggie?
That is.
Are you, are you going to present the changes?
I am going to present them. Thank you so much. I know.
Can I interrupt actually before Maggie gets started?
Yeah.
I probably ought to just offer this that I also live on Astrolane up the road a ways, but feel that I certainly can be impartial in this matter. I sat on the original application and the board had no problem with that. But I just wanted to tell anyone who didn't know that and remind folks who did.
Does anybody have any reservations about that?
None at all.
No, no.
Maureen, we don't need to vote on allowing him to continue sitting, do we?
I, it didn't sound like, it didn't sound like a full conflict. It sounded like more like a disclosure and therefore say you don't have to vote. I would like to ask the applicant, are you expecting anyone else to be attending this meeting like?
Yes, I'm briefly going to introduce our project and then actually Steve Bradstreet, our engineer is going to present.
And the reason I ask is there's someone in the participant list named Steve and I'm, I'm going to assume that's Steve.
I'm thinking that's Steve Bradstreet, yes. He should be logged on.
Okay, so Steve, you want to take it away?
I'm just going to do a quick, brief introduction and then I'm going to pass it over to him. So, you know, I think we all know what we're here for tonight. We're looking to amend our planning board approval that was provided to us in October of eighteen, nineteen, I believe, which provided our lot, our single family lot with the legal frontage that we needed to, to build our home and we, we were provided with that and we've built our home and we're in it now. And we're coming back to you because we'd like to make some further upgrades to the eighty foot portion of private road that was approved. And in addition, while we're here, we'd like to make three other small modifications, which is to modify some signage that's located in the public portion of Astrolane, which is irrelevant at this point and is confusing to drivers. We'd like to remove a significant portion of our driveway to remove some, quite a bit of impervious surface on our lot as well as move the driveway entrance down in front of our garage and we'd like to be able to add a fence on our property. I'm, I, the only reason I wanted to speak briefly here is part of the application materials that we presented with our submission to you included a current conditions map of the neighborhood. I wanted to explain why we presented that separately from the engineering drawings. There's confusion about the gate that's always existed and I wanted to just nip it in the bud ahead of time in case anybody has any specific questions that we could move past it to discuss what we're here for, which is to upgrade the portion of road. You can see on the current conditions map where the gate exists. This gate is a private installation within a private portion of the road. It's not included here on our regular engineering plans because it really doesn't have anything to do with what we're here for. It was a gate that was agreed upon as part of a settlement agreement by most of the residents of Aster Stevenson and South Street, as well as their, their road association. The gate cannot be modified by anybody, including us. It can't be moved. It can't be changed. It can't be breathed on unless everybody that was part of that agreement agrees to it. So I want to just clarify, at no point did we suggest that we were going to touch the gate to anybody and we're not going to. It's going to stay exactly where it is. So that's all settled. We're not intending on changing how we enter and exit our lot in terms of which street we come in on, although it's sort of irrelevant because everybody has rights to use all portions of the private roads that exist through here. But there was some concern from some folks about that. I just wanted to state that's not part of it. We're not part of the road association. But it's irrelevant as well. That, that governs South Street and Stevenson. You know, Noel and I certainly have invested, there was some concern about, you know, how much we pay towards that portion of road. We've, we've, I think, invested more in within this public portion of, I mean, the private portion of this road than all of the homes combined on it probably ever. So I don't think there should be any concern about financial, you know, contributions to the upgrade and maintenance of the road. We, so we will continue to go in and out through Aster. So I just wanted to go through this briefly so we could kind of move on. None of the portion outside of the eighty foot extension that we're looking to invest more money into is really relevant to what we're here for tonight. So with that, I'd like to pass, unless anybody has any specific questions, I'd really like to pass this over to Steve so that he can kind of walk through the upgrades to the private portion of road that we would like to, to make and to address. I believe there were some comments from the town engineer. We are totally fine with including all of those into our plan. And I'm going to have Steve walk through about, to discuss what, how we would address those to the town satisfaction.
Okay, good evening. My name is Steve Brassroot. I'm a private consultant working for ransom consulting for Maggie on this project and I was originally involved on the, the original approval. Maggie had touched base on the items that would be improved, the extension that was done a year and a half ago to the road by paving it, changing a sign out. Her driveway, which on her private property comes in off of that road extension and goes down the entire frontage of her property and then turns ninety degrees into the garage. So it's very, it's a very good idea to remove that driveway from her property, come off further down directly into her driveway. So those are, and then the, the fence that Maggie is proposing. I think that what the, we received the March eighth comments from Steve Harding. His first two, I just sort of background, so there's no response necessary. But on the plans, the area that will be paved, will be paved with a pavement buildup in accordance with the town standards. As far as the roadway width per station, we will put those dimensions on there where they transition. Right now at station one hundred, it is at eighteen feet, but you can see that it widens as it goes further up the street. We will put the transition stations and the widths at those locations. But that road was approved at that design width previously. So what we're doing is just paving it to the town standards. If you recall, there was a paved berm at the beginning of the project, roughly station zero plus twenty or so. And that directed, originally directed water off of upper Aster Lane across the street and into the existing ditch system on that side. What we did with the previous approval is we removed the first two feet of it on the easterly side, I should say, so that the water along that gutter line drains into a new ditch, riprap ditch system, culvert going under Maggie's driveway, et cetera. So the water is being taken care of on our side of the road, Maggie's side of the road, getting off and into a riprap ditch that was previously approved. And then the rest was exiting across the street to the existing and then what was ripwrapped in our project also. So what we're noting or what Steve Harding asked for is that that paved berm be relocated and we will, not knowing exactly where that location will be because of the existing driveway, et cetera, and with the proposed grading, the berm will take on a little different characteristic because the road will be crowned per town standard. So it won't go straight across the road as it's shown now. It will be angled like a gull wing to direct that flow. Steve brought up a point of waiving the stormwater requirements. It's very appropriate for this size project. The existing gravel that was put in there has obviously now been used for a year and a half. The surface is silted up. It has become impervious in itself and is acceptable as being transferred over to a paved surface that is impervious also. But then you have to realize that all the driveway on Maggie's property will be removed and revegetated. So in that area, that twenty foot or so buffer in that area, where the existing driveway is, will be removed. So in fact, we're actually reducing the impervious area fairly considerably with this project or with this proposed amendment. In the project area, we are actually reducing the impervious area. So that's a, a big thing that we want to point out. There was a note three, I believe, on the, or note one on the plans. I had a typo. I think it said with instead of without. So we will be changing that. I was talking about the permissible with the need for replanting. It should be without the need for replanting will be changed in the final version. And then the note three in regards to the sign, the existing sign will be removed and replaced with a no outlet sign, which is a what everyone knows as a dead end sign, but that is the common terminology now is a no outlet sign. So all those things are graphical in nature. It doesn't change any of the design other than some notes and dimensions and a request. So those things will be placed on the plans with a letter of response directed back to the town addressing Steve Harding's comments. And then any further comments that may be forthcoming from the planning board tonight, we will also address and put in that same letter responding. But right now the plans are with some minor revisions are really final plans. But we look forward to any comments or questions that you may have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Next thing I'd like to do is open up the meeting to public comment on the project. If Maureen, I guess, let me know if you see any raised hands. I'll try and see.
Are we sticking to completeness on this?
Yeah, this is just for completeness.
I see twenty attendees. No one has raised their hand to ask to comment on the completeness of this application.
Okay, going once, going twice, the public comment on completeness is closed. So does anybody on the board have any questions on completeness? Yeah, Ray, and just because it's easier for me, use your raise hand feature because then you pop up to the top. But I did hear you, Carol Ann, so go ahead.
Am I correct in understanding that all of your response regarding the building, that section of road to town standard will be done as a narrative, that there won't be any additional drawings showing depth and material and so on.
Well, we have a, on the detail sheet that probably was not included, but was on the originals. I think we had a typical section. Whatever the requirement is for pavement buildup for base, sub basin and base material will be noted on that detail. So it's sort of a, it's noted, but it's also shown on the plans.
So what you're saying is you've already done that, the drawing?
Well, that.
The drawing in the original submission.
And I don't have the original submission. I would.
I, I just ask because that's the norm is for us to see that.
You will see.
Kind of pictorial depiction.
Yes, okay.
Anybody else have any questions?
Jim, I have a motion.
Well, I think according to my scoreboard here, let's see. Yeah, I guess we do, Maureen, we do a motion on completeness right now and then we go to the public hearing again for substantive.
Exactly.
Okay, go ahead, Jonathan. I was wrong.
Okay. All right, motion for completeness. Be it ordered that based on the plans and materials submitted and the facts presented, the application of Maggie Berlum for revisions, including paving the grand, or excuse me, the gravel portion of the approved road, relocating the driveway, updating signage and adding fencing as an allowed activity outside the building envelope to the previous approved Astrolane private road located at eight Astrolane be deemed complete.
Thank you, Jonathan. Have a second.
Second.
Okay, Maureen, please call the roll.
Mr. Bedensky?
Yes.
Mr. Gilbert?
Yes.
Ms. Jordan?
Yes.
Ms. Lynch?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Sarbeck?
Yes.
Chair Hubner?
Yes, motion carries unanimous. Now, next I'd like to open up the public hearing on the substantive, on the substance of the project. Let me see, we have any raised hands in the attendees?
So we have twenty-two attendees right now and if any of them wants to speak, you just hover your, your cursor over your name and there will be an opportunity for you to, on the bottom two, to raise your hand. And.
I don't see.
There are no raised hands.
All right, going once, going twice. The public hearing is closed. So planning board, does anybody have any questions on the substance of the project? Jonathan?
So I just have a question. You knew this was going to come up, Maggie. With regards to the gate, that was the concern we heard. What I heard you say is that there's, no one's going to touch that gate. No one's going to breathe on that gate, which I can understand. Can you just tell us a little bit more about the mechanism that's in place with this court settlement? That makes sure that gate doesn't get touched because the only other thing that I was thinking of, and I don't think it's necessary if there is a court mechanism in place, was to add it as a condition of approval that the gate is not touched. But I, I don't need to add that on if I can just hear a little bit more about what mechanisms in place to assure that that doesn't get touched.
Not a problem. Sure. There was a settlement agreement that was the sole outcome of all of the litigation that occurred around this situation. The sole outcome was that a gate would be installed essentially in the place that we suggested that a gate could be moved to at our very first planning board years ago. The gate was installed as part of the settlement agreement by us. The gates maintained by, and owned by and maintained by the road association. All of the residents, except for one or two located on South Street, Stevenson Street and Astrolane, as well as everybody in the road association voted to place the gate here and to settle our lawsuit. It's been recorded, the settlement's been recorded. Everybody has copies of it. I can't imagine that anybody's going to get together and agree to do anything different with this gate, but it would all have to be agreed upon by every single person that signed that original agreement. The gate really is not town sanctioned. Lucky for all of you on the planning board, it doesn't have to have anything to do with you, which is why it's not on the plan. It's not approved by the planning board. It's not your problem to really need to deal with it again. We've sort of settled it. It's a private matter on a private road. I think that's probably the simplest way to, to put it. It's not the liability of the town and probably doesn't need to be made the liability of the town in any manner. So.
Okay, I'm satisfied. Thank you.
Okay.
Carol Ann?
Okay, now see if I can remember what I was going to have. Oh, sign. One of the letters we got commented on the sign and whether the people on South Street and Stevenson should have say in changing the the sign to whatever it is, no, no outlet. Is, is that part of any settlement or was that part of the approval?
I'm just. No, that is, sorry, the, the signage was part of our original approval. It was a requirement that we install the signage. It has nothing to do at all with our settlement agreement. It's not part of it. That, that sign is located within the public portion of the road. Honestly, I don't really think here that much about the sign, but it's very confusing for people that are just driving down Astrolane that don't understand that there's now this random gate in the middle of the road and they can't access Stevenson, they can't access South Street. And so if they're looking for those places, they can't get through. So it's just a confusing sign. It's irrelevant. It doesn't make any sense. We are happy to bear the burden of the cost of changing it to a sign that's town approved within the public portion of road that simply says no outlet, like dead end, like every other dead end that exists. So that's where that.
Okay, I just want to make sure it wasn't part of any settlement.
Yes.
That's part of it. Okay.
And doesn't have anything to do with the road association or, or anything. It's really the town sign at this point.
Okay.
Have any other questions? Do I have a motion? Don't jump.
No one wants to read this motion.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Mary Ann.
So I'm a new member. I think I have to read the whole thing, right?
Yes, you do.
So motion for approval, findings of fact. As set out in B one, is that enough for me to say?
You have to read the whole thing.
Okay. Maggie Berlum is requesting amendments to an approval granted October fifteenth, twenty nineteen to add surf, surface pavement to the previously approved gravel private road, relocating the eight Astrolane driveway to a portion of Astrolane that has not been approved as a private road, replacing quote, private road, close quote, sign with a quote, no outlet, close quote, sign, and adding fencing to the activities allowed outside the building envelopes, which require review under section sixteen dash two dash three of the subdivision ordinance. The Astrolane approved, number two, the Astrolane approved private road section been previously approved by the Cape Elizabeth Planning Board to be in conformance, in compliance with the subdivision ordinance and the findings and decisions of those approvals, which are not altered by the proposed amendments remain in effect. Number three, the private road approval revisions will not result in undue water pollution. The slope of the land, proximity to streams and state and local water resource rules and regulations will not be compromised by the private road approval revisions. Number four, the private road approval revisions will not cause soil erosion based on the erosion control measures shown. Number five, the private road approval revisions are intended to meet town standard subject to the additional details added to the plans. The private road name change has been approved by the town assessor. Number six, the applicant has demonstrated adequate technical and financial capability to complete the project. Number seven, the private road approval revisions will not adversely impact surface water quality. Number eight, the private road approval revisions will provide for adequate stormwater management. Number nine, the private road approval revisions will continue to provide a vegetative buffer throughout and around the subdivision and screening as needed. Number ten, the applicant has substantially addressed the standards of the subdivision ordinance, section sixteen dash three dash one. Therefore, be it ordered that based on the plans and materials submitted and the facts presented, the application of Maggie Berlin for revisions, including paving the gravel portion of the approved road, relocating the driveway, updating signage and adding fences, adding fencing as an allowed activity outside the building envelope to the previously approved Astrolane private road located at eight Astrolane be approved, subject to the following conditions. Number one, that the plans be revised to address the recommendations in the town engineer's letter dated March eighth, twenty twenty one. Number two, that the applicant submit evidence of financial capability to complete the proposed revisions and number three, that the plans be revised and submitted to the town planner for review and approval prior to recording the subdivision plot.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Do I have a second?
Second.
Maureen, please call the roll.
Mr. Bedensky?
Yes.
Mr. Gilbert?
Yes.
Ms. Jordan?
Yes.
Ms. Lynch?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Sarbeck?
Yes.
Chair Hubner?
Yes, the motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Maggie and Steve.
Thank you.
Okay. Hold on a second.
I'm going to be bringing some people on as panelists and moving some people off as panelists.
Okay. Agenda item number three, Town Center Affordable Housing Amendments. The Town Council has referred to the Planning Board amendments to the Town Center District to enable an affordable housing project, section nineteen dash ten dash three, table to public hearing. Yeah, table to public hearing. All right, I remind that part. All right. Before we get into it, I believe the Town Council Chair Jamie Garvin is an attendee and I'd like to ask him to, go ahead, were you going to say something?
I just, do we have to take it off the table first?
No.
No?
No.
Okay.
I've never, we never had to do that before, I guess.
Since we've put it on the agenda, Mary Ann, we don't do a motion to remove from the table.
Okay.
Considered an active item because it's on the agenda.
Okay.
All right.
Yeah, so Jay, is Jamie available to, to speak?
He's right here.
Okay, Jamie's going to review what our charge is and, from the Town Council. So go ahead, Jamie. Thanks for coming.
Yeah, pleasure to be with you guys. Thank you, Chair Hubner. Thank you, the planning board. Thank you, Maureen for the invitation. Mainly, you know, happy to answer questions from the planning board if there are any, which, which I gather from speaking Maureen that there might be some folks that are looking for a little additional clarity on this. I guess where I would start off just as introduction though is to say that. this item, you know, not unlike any item comes before the Planning Board is really, you know, in line with, with the rest of your all's responsibilities as it relates to, you know, reviewing proposed developments and then also providing comments on proposed ordinance amendments, which obviously this falls into the latter on a little bit more. So, I think, you know, I don't want to speak for the entire council, but I can represent, I think, you know, what was, what was the gist of our meeting where we made this referral to you, which was the council had a very initial sort of sneak preview presentation. As I know you all have had similar presentations delivered to you from the developer. Within that proposal, there were multiple requests for zoning amendments or relief from existing zoning requirements in order to be able to make the project viable, you know, in the, in the eyes of the developer. And so the council was looking for you all as the experts, the advisory experts in both our land and land planning and land use regulations, basically to come back and, and you know, give us some sort of advisory assessment as to whether or not project able to can, can, to write or, or construct ordinance amendments that specifically fit what was being asked for. So I guess as a starting point, you know, it's conceivable that one outcome would be, you know, you all through your process could say, you know, we, we don't think we can actually come up with something that meets that need. I, I don't know, I'm just, you know, spitballing possible scenarios. Alternatively, you know, if, if there was some sort of draft that did meet the request to come up with the language that you felt was consistent with the general direction for planning, consistent with the comprehensive plan, and return that to the council for us to, to review and consider and, and, you know, ultimately vote on whether or not to move forward on. I think, more specifically as well, you know, what's, what's obviously in a bit of tension as it relates to, you know, development in the town center generally, and this specific request, you know, more specifically, is we've got two guiding documents that, you know, aren't entirely one another and don't completely reconcile with one another. One being previous town center plan, which, you know, obviously, you know, contemplated a certain type of development in the town center specifically with first floor retail specifically, specifically, you know, a, a certain size. And then a superseding document in the comprehensive plan that very specifically alluded to and envisioned the, the need to possibly update, revise and consider alternative regulatory measures in order to meet, you know, several of, of the enumerated goals around housing and in particular around, you know, the, the variety of housing and types of housing available in town and the availability of affordable housing. So, you know, I think the council and I personally recognize that those two things are, you know, obviously run into just a little bit of conflict with one another. Certainly, some of the comment that I've seen, you know, from the public by way of email sort of addresses that, the historical work that went into developing town center plan with, you know, how this may or may not either deviate from or contradict some of that direction, so. But, so that all being said, I, I think the council was very interested to hear the planning board's opinion about, you know, especially since the planning board was involved in the review of the comprehensive plan as well, or, or some of the drafting of it, that, you know, a, a opinion be brought forward on, like I said, sort of how to, how to reconcile those two things. So I'll pause there for a minute and see if anybody has reaction or questions through the chair.
Okay, Mary Ann.
Hi, Jamie, thank you for coming.
Pleasure. Thank you guys for your time on this. Yeah.
So I tend to go to the language of the order that came from the council as kind of the governing document. And I looked at the first sentence, the Cape Elizabeth Town Council refers to the planning board, development of town center affordable housing amendments. The amendments should preserve town center requirements to the extent feasible, while also permitting an affordable housing project that provides a substantial public benefit. Goes on to talk about recommended amendment should be returned to the council by April, whatever. It struck me as a, a request or order of the council to do our best job to put together an amendment for you. Not that we would go back and say, we can't do it, but that we would say, here's how it should be done. And I.
Yeah, I, I think, yeah, I don't mean to speak over you, sorry, that sort of the first part of what I was saying, I think, is exactly that, that I think that's the expectation, but also sort of recognizing that. So the very first part of what you said, and I, I don't have it verbatim in front of me, but about, you know, developing this sort of ordinance or this sort of language in such a way that preserves as much of the spirit of the other town center regulations. So that was my point about saying, I, I don't know, and I'm not, I'm honestly, I'm not saying this to try and lead the witness or anything, but, you know, you all might say, well, there's no way we can craft, you know, ordinance amendment X in a way that is consistent. Does that make sense? Or in a way that does preserve, you know, the spirit of, you know, of what was previously laid out or, or what, what stands as the existing regulations today, so. I, I, let me try and come up with a, a sort of a fake hypothetical. I mean loosely based on, on the existing example. If, if one of the things being requested had to do with the parking ratio, and there just wasn't anywhere to put the parking, I would imagine that you all would come back to us and say, I'm sorry, but we can't waive the parking regulation when there literally is no alternative for the parking. This is just a hypothetical. I'm not, I'm not specifically drawing it from, you know, the existing proposal, but does that make sense? Mary Ann?
See.
I saw Carol Anne shaking her head too.
I was looking at it a little differently, that in fact, we might come back to you and say, it can't work, but here's how it should be drafted so that it could work, preserving the town center requirements to the extent feasible. So I looked at it as, we do what we can to preserve what we can, but then we move to the next step of, what do we need to do to permit an affordable housing project that provides a benefit? And so that we might actually go back and say, the parking needs to change. Not that we would go back and say, it can't be done
Right.
within the existing ordinance, but we would say, here's the ordinances that need to change.
Yeah, I think, I think we're saying the same thing and maybe if I could just clarify or finesse it a little bit differently, because I, I totally agree with what you're saying, with the, the, the sort of roadblock example that I was giving was, so what you're saying is, you know, here, here's the proposed language that we're offering up. And, you know, within that, it would be clear what needed to change or what needed to be waived in order for that to go forward. What I'm saying is just, i- if there was simply something that was completely irreconcilable, right? Or it wasn't just a matter of, well, you know, it meets A, B, and C, but we've got to move on D and E in order to make it work. What, what I'm saying is something that just, you know, literally is not feasible. Does, does that make sense? Is that, I don't know if that clarifies it further? No?
I, I guess, I, I'm, I was left early on with the idea that we were to come back with something that makes it feasible. And then, and then it would be up to the council to decide as a policy matter, whether you want to.
Yes, absolutely. Yeah, so, uh, uh, let's, let's take it outside of the scope of this language in this particular, i- in, in that way, it's no different than the short-term rentals, right? Or, or other things that have, have a policy-specific impact and direction.
Yes.
Where you all are saying to, to the council, this is, this is how the language would be crafted. And, you know, this, this is, you know, what the requirements would be. You all decide if that's ultimately what you want to do from a policy perspective. Yeah, so, I'm totally on the same page with you on that.
Okay.
I, I would, and, and I, I'm not trying to confuse the matter or, or, or make cloud, you know, cloud muddy the waters on it. What, what I was just trying to say is, I, I guess from more of a technical standpoint, if there, if there, there's only so much revision or modification you can do to something, but if, you know, if it, I think the council wanted to know if, if there was something that just was completely incon, you know, a, a, an absolute oblique left turn. That, that whole language about, in a way that's as consistent as possible or whatever, whatever the language in the, in the referral was, you know, if there was something that in, in the opinion of the, the planning board specifically was just such a dramatic left turn, well, you know, we'd want to have you guys say, well, here's, here's this language, but, but you should know that it's not in the least in keeping with the spirit of or intent of the previous town center.
And the language.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, and the language is to the extent feasible.
Right.
So I would think that we would be crafting an ordinance unless we came to the conclusion after studying it, that something was just not feasible.
Right.
Okay.
I mean, I, I think, as you know, Mary Ann and the rest of the planning board knows, it, it's not the job of the planning board to develop policy. It's the job of the planning board to develop ordinances that are consistent with the guidance of policy from other, you know, from the council and other, you know, planning documents for the town, so. So we certainly weren't asking you to, you know, weigh in and, and, and opine from a, from a policy standpoint, whether or not you thought the idea of doing an affordable housing development project, you know, was something of merit at this point, or or so on. It was just, you know, if, if, if a project like this was to move forward, what would the, what would the ordinance language need to look like in order to satisfy, you know, satisfy that, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
See a bunch of other hands.
Yeah, Carol Anne.
I'll let Jonathan go before me because he's usually more articulate than I am.
He is a silver tongue devil, that's for sure. Go ahead, Jonathan.
Great, no pressure. Thanks, Carol Anne. Geez, I'm gonna let Andrew go first. No, um, so, yeah, Jamie, I, I think you just answered some of my questions, but what, what I'm kind of confused about was the, the language of to the extent feasible. Feasible to what? You know, like feasible to the comp plan, feasible to the current ordinances? Because anything's feasible, but if you're, if we're trying to craft it within the, the current zoning and we're getting a, and we're basically being requested to make four different changes to the current zoning, I, I don't think that that would fall under the definition of easy or convenient. And that's to me what I think of as being feasible. So can you give us a little bit of direction on, on that? Because when I looked at this thing, it was sort of, all right, guys crafted a affordable housing amendment that keeps in the spirit of the town center, but then because somebody is giving a public benefit, and I definitely agree with, I think it's unanimous on this board, that affordable housing is a public benefit. But how do we craft that? How do we craft that ordinance in a way to allow affordable housing, but then also keep in the spirit of the, the town center?
So I think the, the, the word feasible is obviously what's, what's, what I'm gathering is tripping some people up. What I would perhaps try and try and put a different context around is obviously in no way, either through the comprehensive plan, public sentiment or desire of the council, is there any, is there any impetus to, to, you know, make wholesale changes to town center zoning and, you know, direction that's, you know, been consistent for a number of years, you know, around how, how we want the town center to look and, and what type of business and, and development we want to see sprout up there. So that, I think, the, the, the word, you know, feasible relating back to a project that has a specific public benefit, and in this case, it's affordable housing. But, you, you know, I, I think one could envision other projects that have a specific and, and measurable public benefit beyond affordable housing. But that we want to be very careful in, in, you know, maintaining guardrails that, you know, don't allow for, you know, wholesale changes beyond that very narrow and focused intent. And so to, I think, the, the phrase to the degree feasible is, is sort of a nod to, hey, we want to keep all the rest of what's good about our very specific and codified regulations around development in the town center, while acknowledging that for a project like this, or again, something, even if you took the affordable housing out of it, you know, say somebody wanted to come in and build a community center or something, I don't, I don't know, some, something that, you know, or I know we have a, you know, recently renovated library, but if somebody else wanted to say, hey, I'm gonna, you know, some foundation came in and said, I, I want to build you a new library, you know, just making a ridiculous example for, for the sake of the point. Something that has a specific community benefit, well, that's probably something that, you know, should also fall within this, right? So, but that there's, there's no desire, there's no policy direction, there's no community desire to, you know, stray from what's an otherwise fairly tightly construed set of regulations for the town center. Does that answer you, Jonathan?
It does, thanks.
Okay.
Andrew, or Carol Anne, are you ready to go?
I, I think so. I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna be kind of black and white on this. When we, when we started this process, the way we approached it was, let's come up with what we would need to do, what would be required in order to allow affordable housing in the town center. And then we send it with the town council and they can take it, they can throw it out, they can revise it, they can do whatever they want, but based on the direction I understood when we started, saying that that's not feasible at all was not even in the, the thought process that we started. And this, you're making this way grayer than it ever was, and it's gonna make it a lot harder.
I'm certainly not trying to do that, so, you know, hope, hope from, continue to talk this through. We can get it more black and white for you. I, I guess what I, I, I tend to think, you know, the, all the laws of unintended consequences and, and, you know, sort of best-case scenarios, worst-case scenarios, all different things that come out and I articulate was ra- rather, th- this process shouldn't be, somebody asks for a whole bunch of things and we just write up the language that conforms to what they're asking for. I mean, there needs to be some sort of qualitative review and assessment of that to say, well, does this even? review and assessment of that to say, well, does this even, this even doable? You know, i- in, in our scenario, right? So, um, and I, I don't think anything that's being asked for falls into that if I'm being, you know, putting my own personal view on it. And again, not, not everybody else. I mean, I, I don't, I don't think that there's any of the four or five things that are big that that fall into that. But that's, I mean, you, you guys know that stuff better than most of us on the, on the council, uh, because you deal with it a lot more closely. And I think that's just where we were leaning you for your advice and, and counsel. So, I, I think, you know, i- if I, if I, if I, you know, put a politics hat on, frankly, Carol Anne, I, I think what what we probably, it's probably, like I said, I think it's practice and I think it's bad, bad process to just take a bunch of requests from any developer of any kind, whether presidential or anything and say, oh, well, okay, this is what you asked for. So we'll just write it and then, then see what the council thinks of that. I mean, I, I think that at every step along the way, there should be somebody asking questions, you know, at, at least to, to vet it and raise, you know, raise observations and, and, and things like that.
I agree with that observation, Jamie. And, um, but sometimes you don't know which way the world is moving until somebody come in, comes in and asks for something. And then it gets very cloudy.
For sure. Yeah.
Line and what, why you're approaching it.
Yeah. And, you know, I, I think, you know, one of the other, you know, pieces of practical information to apply to this too, is that if you go back to the town center plan and even some of what was brought forward in the update to the comprehensive plan, that all envisions a sort of reality that hasn't happened. So, you know, there's a number of properties that have sat vacant or dormant. There's a number of properties that have had revolving tendencies. Um, and I think that the town center plan was drafted with this idealized view of what the town center could be in the form of, you know, some kind of quaint New England village that really hasn't come to fruition. And, you know, if, if you ask me, that's largely due to market conditions and not policy or, or ordinance, um, regulations. So, um, you know, given all that, as you said, Carolyn, you know, there's an element at some point where you have to start being a little bit more forward looking to, to say, okay, well, what, you know, what, what should we be thinking of and considering? You know, that, that, that does present as an opportunity, um, to make, y- y- you know, make regulations that would provide for a, a beneficial, um, development. So.
Okay. Andrew.
Yeah. Um, you know, I think a lot of this is, is, you know, the feasibility side of things, you know, a lot of what we're talking about is really just um, changing metrics. So forty-five or thirty-five feet to forty-five feet, say, for maximum building height or one density housing to another density and one, you know, X number of parking plots required for, for residents to another. The challenge, I think the board's having is, what are the, I mean, even, even if we very narrowly scope this in terms of the town center, is what really are the, the implications of that? Clearly there, there were implications that were in, were considered when the town center was planned, was put together. You know, why do we care that, that the maximum height is thirty-five feet and not forty-five feet when it was designed? And does that extra ten feet, um, is that outweighed by this public benefit? And I think what we're really struggling with is like, that is a, that these are all policy questions. And so we can craft something for sure. I just, you know, is it, is it, does it, is it worth doing? I mean, in this venue for one project? I mean, and I think, you know, you can say that like, you know, we, we shouldn't be tailoring this to one project, but it kind of reads that way, you know, the directive to us. So I think that's kind of something that we're really having a hard time with. Because I think if we were thinking about this from a planning perspective for the town, we think about, you know, some of the things that I've been asking, is there any place else in town, things like this could go that are logical? And that would, would maybe fit the town better, or, you know, clearly there's a strong headwind against this project. I mean, I, and I don't know if it's going to ever get anywhere because of that headwind. But, um, it's, you know, we can easily craft something that's narrowly focused and exceeds all these ordinances that are already in place, but I, I don't know what the implications of those are. And I'm not sure the town council will know what those are, even if you vote on them. Because yet maybe there does need to be study. I mean, there has been at least one letter suggesting, do you need to do a parking study if you changes? I mean, yeah, there probably, there could be some research certainly done, looking at other, um, information around the country probably, but you know, I don't know. Do we need a lot more study on this to make even these small changes? I, I really don't know. I'm not sure we have enough experience to, 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 to know exactly what the implications are.
Okay. Um, Jonathan, did you have your hand up and took it down? You're on mute, Jonathan.
Yeah. Thank you. I wasn't quick enough on the draw to get myself off mute. Um, no, I, I, I think what Andrew just said, I, and just to kind of expand on what he said, it's not just, um, that there's a, there's a headwind of public sentiment, but also is a difficulty in, we started this conversation with talking about hypotheticals, but there's an elephant in the room here that we have a project that has been presented to us and presented to the town council that has very strict requirements um, for it to be, sorry to use this term because I know it's been thrown around, but feasible. Um, feasible to make this project work for them. And I think that they've done a lot of work and, and and it's a, it's a very, I commend them for making the efforts to do it, but it's also very difficult for us because it's basically saying, okay, any deviation from the things that are going to make this project not work, they can't do it. And so it, it kind of, it's been taken out of that hypothetical realm and really put into that policy discussion, which to me, I think is outside of what we do as the planning board. And I think Mary Ann hit on that earlier. So that's sort of where I, where my struggle is as well.
Okay. Um, I guess the way I look at it, Jonathan, I think you said, uh, give you credit for using the phrase, if this project had been before the town council and the town back when the comprehensive plan and the town center district ordinances were being written, they would have been different. As you said, Jamie, this was our ideal. And as you also just said, it's not having the desired effect. So, yeah, and like Carol Anne said, to me, you know, come up with, I was, I had Carol Anne's attitude, come up with something that can make affordable housing, come up with amendments that can make affordable housing work in the town center. And I guess I was playing, we're going to do that and we're going to send it up to you where the town council then discusses the policy implications of it. Well, I was playing on, and here's what you need to do to make a plan similar to this work. And trying to make it black and white. Go ahead.
So, um, what I was just going to say is, i- in my view, and, and, you know, with respect to John's comment, I, you know, I totally understand the reality of a specific proposal, you know, being behind this, but I, I don't want to lose sight of part of what I was saying before about whether it be affordable housing, and I know that the, the, you know, the, the request and referral was specific around affordable housing, but there's also that, you know, or, or something else that has a significant community benefit, right? So it, maybe if, I don't know if it would be helpful to, you know, broaden, you know, broaden your view of, in, in, instead of feeling like you're, you're, you know, so closely associating the, the, the amendments with this very specific proposal that's brought forward. I mean, if this proposal fails, you know, for any number of different reasons, maybe the developer just says, hey, you know what? We changed our mind. We're not going to do it. And either somebody else comes in with affordable housing, or somebody else comes in with something that is, again, some other, you know, demonstrable community benefit, then conceivably, these amendments should apply regardless, right?
Okay.
If, if, you know, if the council is saying, yes, we think there's a policy benefit to having greater flexibility uh, within this specific area of the town center and, you know, see development happen and, and have it be the comment that has specific community benefit to it.
Okay.
So do we, do we have till July now?
Say that again, Carol.
So I remember, I, I watched.
Do you have until July? Or August?
I, I, I did watch, I did watch, I think it was your very first workshop, uh, when you guys were, um, uh, I, I think it was one of the early on workshops where maybe the developers had come and presented the same presentation to you that they had presented to the council, maybe slightly updated. But I think Jonathan, you, you had a very specific comment about, you know, hey, look, if we run out of time, we go to the council and say, we need more time and this is why. And, you know, that's what my expectation would be. Um, you know, there's, I, I don't have any specifically artificial timeline. I know the developer presented, you know, a, a straw man timeline, you know, that they're looking to work with in terms of getting shovels in the ground and getting all their approvals done and all that kind of stuff. But, um, you know, while we, while we don't have an interest necessarily in, in unnecessarily drawing this out, I, I, I don't, I don't think the council would object to if there was legitimate reason and, and work being done against, um, the referral. Um, you know, if whatever the date is in April comes and, and the work isn't done yet, then, you know, we talk about it then, but.
Okay. Expect a letter.
I don't, I don't, I don't, in my, in my nearly six years on the council, I don't remember the planning board or any other committee coming to the council, asking for an extension for something and having that extension be denied. So.
All right. Does anybody else have any questions?
I wouldn't.
For Jamie. All right. Jamie, you going to hang around for a while?
Yeah, I'm happy to, if you guys are discussing this more, I'm happy to hang around and, and, um, if anybody, you know, has questions, I, I, I can come back to another meeting or through Maureen, talk individually or, or what have you.
Maureen, do you have his, his cell phone number? You can maybe text him instead of making him hang around unnecessarily.
I think it's, I don't mind hanging. I got nothing else to do.
Oh, don't, don't say that. Don't say that. All right. Um, with that, I don't see any other hand being raised. I'd like to, to move on. Um, I know uh, Zantin Company has an update, uh, and I think you've all gotten a letter on uh, the first floor retail, but I'd like if Nathan could take a couple minutes and just verbally go through that. I guess Maureen, if you can make him a panelist.
Um, I've promoted Nathan Zantin and Robert Monks, and I'm looking to see if there's anyone else I need to promote. It looks like we're.
Kristen Martin.
I'm looking for her. There she is. Okay. Got her.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, my colleague Kristen Martin will speak for a couple of minutes about what we found when we analyzed the impact of our project doing part of the first floor as commercial space, um, which this board asked us to look at, at the March second workshop. Then I'll speak for just a minute, um, on a couple of other points. We'll keep our presentation to about three or four minutes total. Kristen?
Sure. Good evening, everybody. Um, so yeah, we provided a letter and I'm just going to kind of briefly summarize that. Um, but we ran two different scenarios to try to see if we could make commercial space work in the property. Um, we assumed a couple of things. We assumed that, that any TIF ask we have would remain unchanged. And we assumed that the cost of construction per square foot for the residential areas would stay the same as we had previously planned it. Um, and we included a lower construction cost for any commercial space because it would obviously be less finished than the apartments that include kitchens and all of that. Um, so the first scenario we ran was to remove six of the one-bedroom units on the first floor that faced out on the village green, um, which would allow for two nineteen hundred square foot commercial areas um, in that space. And what we found was that by removing the six apartments from the, um, financial model, we had to also reduce that what we would be receiving from main housing for subsidy. And the amount of tax credits we would be awarded would be reduced, which would result in less equity from the sale of those tax credits. We also would have a reduction in our income because commercial space doesn't have the same income as residential area. So there was a reduced capacity for us to take on mortgage. So the amount of mortgage debt we could, um, support went down. So all of that resulted in a financial gap for the project, um, of about $400,000. So 400,000 less sources than we have uses for the property. Um, and more impactful than that, though, in this scenario was that the cost, um, the total development cost per unit would exceed the standard that main housing has. Um, they have a cap on how much you can spend, um, on the development cost per unit. And because we're losing six units, but there are all these fixed costs that don't reduce at the same rate, um, we end up exceeding the main housing guideline, which would mean that we wouldn't be eligible for main housing financing. Um, so the second scenario we ran was to assume that we wouldn't have to eliminate any apartments that we could find two nineteen hundred square foot spaces for commercial, um, and that we would find other space for the apartments to exist in the building. Um, in that scenario, we saw no increase in main housing subsidy or the, the equity from the tax credit because that stays stable if the unit count stays stable. Um, but we did find that because commercial income doesn't cover construction in the same way that residential does, there would be a financial gap. Um, in this scenario, it was about $250,000. But really the main issue with this scenario is that really there isn't any room to put those six apartments anywhere else. Um, the building footprint can't really spread any more than it has because of the side setbacks, um, with the side lots. And so really the only way to fit those six apartments anywhere else would be to go up a fifth story, um, which would of course mean an, another height increase asked, um, which would be probably in the range of fifty-five to fifty-eight feet in height. So those were the two scenarios that we ran.
Thanks, Kristen. Um, and I'll just, so just, I'll just make three quick points. One is, um, just to remind you all that what we're proposing is forty-nine units, eight, uh, eight two bedrooms and forty-one one bedrooms. The one bedrooms would be about six hundred square feet. The two bedrooms would be about eight hundred and fifty square feet. Of those, thirty-nine would be affordable, set aside for households with incomes below sixty percent of the area median income. And the other ten would be rented at market rates to people regardless of their income. Just also, secondly, wanted to mention that we had a really good public meeting last week on the, on the 10th. Um, it was by Zoom. Uh, thirty-five or so people came. We, uh, recorded it and will, will, I, I think it's available on the, on the Cape Elizabeth Facebook group. Um, and also we will, we, um, have created a website for this project called dunhamcourt.com. Um, and we will make the, a link to that neighborhood meeting available to anybody who contacts us through the website who would like to see it. It was, it was a, an hour and forty minutes, lots of questions, lots of back and forth. It was very, um, very civil. Uh, and, uh, I think got a lot of information out. The website, and this is the last point I'll make, the website has on it a brief summary of our project, um, architects renderings, FAQs, frequently asked questions and their answers, some information about our company, how to contact us, and links to stories about the project that have appeared in various publications and on the local TV news. Um, and again, that's dunhamcourt.com for anyone who wants to go check it out. That's all we have as a presentation, um, but we're very happy to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Nathan and Kristen and Robert. Appreciate your time. Are you, are you going to hang around for a while?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks. Um, the next, did anyone have any questions for them before we move on with this? The next, Jim, I have any questions for them before we move on with this? Okay. All right. So the next thing I I have is to open up, to take public comment. And I'd like to limit this to fifteen minutes total, but we'll just see how many people want to want to speak. And I want to limit each person to three minutes. So Maureen, do you have your timer?
I have it ready, yes.
Okay, I guess let's look for some hands to see if anybody from the public wants to speak.
Okay, I had a hand. There it is. I'm going to allow to talk.
Robert Gips, it's it looks like he's muted. Okay, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
First of all, this is Rob Gips. I live 109 Donald Park in Cape Elizabeth, and thank you to all of you who are spending time parsing through these difficult issues of what the interplay between the planning board and council's mandate is. It's been interesting education for me. I'm going to keep my comment really short. I just really am pleased to see that there's a sensible, reasonable project to bring affordable housing into the town center. And I feel that with a lot of other people, obviously, you all agree that this is a public benefit, but I just want to underscore that I think it's a great thing to see this project and hopefully other projects are going to focus on what we need to do to make this town affordable for more people in terms of of housing costs. And on the issue of the of the town center, I feel like adding this increased density of population into the town center can only help with the the goals of the town plan to have the the village come into development over time. So in short, thanks for all of your attention to this. I'm really supportive of Cape becoming a more diverse, affordable place for those people who live in this and work in this community already. And I hope we can find a way to make this happen. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Robert. I see Josh Bention, if I hope I didn't butcher your your name.
Can you hear me?
Yep, you're you're on.
Thank you. Thanks for giving me some time to speak. Nine Rocky Hill Road, speaking today as a as a resident, but also as a fellow developer. I, as a resident, I think this is a great project. You know, I I I think a good use of this space. I understand and appreciate the challenges that the the board and the counselor juggling right now. But as a developer, and I just full disclosure, Bobby and I have partnered on previous projects. I'm not affiliated with with Nathan's group. I first and foremost have the greatest deal of respect for Nathan and Kristen and Amy. I think they're the best of the best in terms of affordable housing developers. So I'd be very happy if they did a project in our town. Secondly, we did a conversion of a mill in Sanford, my company's Northland Enterprises. And we did thirty six units on the second and third floor and twenty two thousand square feet on the ground level. And that was due to a town center zoning that the town of Sanford had implemented. And that was seven years ago. And we have a waiting list of sixty people for the upper floors and yet to have full occupancy on the on the ground level. And I've just actually gone through a zone change with the town of Sanford to allow housing on that first floor. So I can I can speak to the challenge. It's a chicken and egg problem. I think that Kate, we've got a little bit of that downtown where retail tenants may be viable, but I don't think this is the right site for it. And I think having forty nine units of quality housing is going to help the front lot, for instance, secure a really good retail use. And I, you know, I I I I really admire you guys for taking this on. I know it's not easy, but I think it's a great project. And I I hope that you can work through the changes that are necessary with the zoning. Thank you.
Thank you, Josh. I guess I was going to ask you about the first floor, but you answered that question in your speech. So that's interesting. How how many square feet on the first floor in that mill building?
Twenty two thousand square feet. So it's really big. We've had, and we're going to end up having eleven thousand. That's going to maintain as as commercial. But what's been interesting is we've had, you know, restaurants come and they look around. And Sanford is different. It's, you know, it's in the in the heart of the Mill Yard and where really the only mill that's been redeveloped. But they look at these other buildings. They say, if these were filled with people, we would do a restaurant here, but they just didn't, you know, they they didn't want to be there without the bodies. And so so that was compelling for the town or for the city of Sanford to allow us to add, you know, seven more units on the ground floor. It's just it's just hard, and the economics are really difficult with the rents that are, you know, you don't want to rent to a national tenant and get twenty bucks a foot. You want to rent to a local tenant who's, you know, vibrant in the local economy, but that those rents that they can pay are just not high enough to support large developments like this.
Thank you. Thank you, Josh. Let's see. I see another hand up, Richard Blake. Well, no, he went down. TC, I assume, and that's not Town Center, but.
TC Hafenrepper at twenty four Gayfield Road. I'm a lifelong resident. I'm actually a commercial broker at NEI, the Dunham Group, which has no affiliation to the Dunham Court. But just wanted to quickly mention, you know, sort of piggyback on what Josh Bention was saying regarding, you know, the chicken and the egg and getting a higher population density into that that town center and and helping that create sort of a more vibrant downtown area and and, you know, fostering more retail growth, which or, you know, better growth and sort of what we have down there. So, you know, that along with, you know, on a personal level, you know, I've lived in Cape my entire life and you know, having a an affordable option for for parents or grandparents to to be able to downsize and and stay in the area is is extremely important and strikes home with me. So I just wanted to reiterate that and you know, just give my general support of the project.
Well, thank you very much. Let's see, I'm hesitating. I saw Richard Blake's hand go up again, then he disappeared again. So. Okay.
Are you there?
Yeah, yeah, we can hear you.
It's just technologically challenging to do some of these things. Sorry for the confusion. I want to make two two points. I was a banker in Portland for forty three years with ending up with a very large bank. And I basically ran a couple of departments, Commercial Real Estate Lending and CRA, which is Community Reinvestment Act investing. And that was basically affordable housing development. And over the years, we did projects from northern Maine down to Florida and a lot in New England. And Nathan was a client of ours, I guess. We invested in three or four of his projects in Portland alone, another one in Exeter, New Hampshire. And from a standpoint of an investor, the equity investor who ends up owning a substantial proportion of the project generally ninety nine point nine nine percent. Nathan was an outstanding developer and an exceptional manager. And as I say, we did a number of projects with him. And I think the town, if we're going to do this, has the right developer. And I also think they have the right product in the in the town center. You don't want to put affordable housing where it's not walkable to town amenities and putting it further down Ocean House Road or out on Bowery Beach Road or something is is not a good decision. The other part, after retiring from the bank, I started a little consulting business, helping people and companies refinance or restructure debt or decide what to purchase property for, what the price might be, doing some feasibility and market analysis and a lot of number crunching. And during that consulting time, I had one customer who wanted to look at purchasing the land that was eventually purchased by the dentist. But as we went through the numbers, it was the requirement of so much commercial space on the first floor was just too much risk for him. And I think it would be too much risk for a bank to underwrite. And subsequently to that, last fall, I had another customer come in and they wanted to consider purchasing a site and putting some apartments above. But again, the problem of leasing out the first floor, the time which it will take to lease and the uncertainty of the what the rents would be, that person backed away also. I think the town center project, town center plan is a good plan, but I think it's the requirement that every first floor have commercial space is unrealistic. I don't know how long the town center plan has been in existence, but it's been several years. And I think I know of maybe two projects that have been able to develop within the town in that time. So I think Nathan is presenting a great project in the perfect location. And I think he will be an outstanding developer and the town will benefit. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Blake. I see another Lucas. Mr. Holmitch?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
My apologies, as I've done before, when I haven't known I was going to speak in front of any group. I'm just kind of raising to put my thoughts together. But it just seems like I can't wait too much longer lest, you know, the opinions not all be spoken. Listening to this whole project, it's been rather interesting to watch how this town treats smaller, let's call them, for lack of a better word, entrepreneurs who want to try to do things and how they go in front of councils and boards or in front of town planners and are told what you can do and what you cannot do versus to watch somebody who has much greater resources walk in and tell the town council that this is what we're going to do, watch the town council turn to the planning board and say, you know, now tell us what we have to change. And I realize that that might be my interpretation, but you know, not everybody's gone in front of the town planning board. I know there's at least a few people who have. I wonder what this town would look like. People complain about there not being enough of a developed town center. I wonder what this town would look like if every time they were willing to say, hey, let's change a little bit here because this is a reasonable project. Or let's not force this smaller person to put a front door here when they've already got two other doors here. It's rather frustrating. As I said, I think it's just time to speak up. To to listen furthermore, to listen to Nathan talk week after week about things like, hey, here's here's exactly what we need. And by the way, I don't even think we're going to need one parking place per unit. To listen to him say things like, traffic's not going to be affected, one car every two minutes. If you've driven that town center line during the school hours when kids are trying to get to school, first of all, it's going to be more than one car per every two minutes at that time. So again, you know, I just wasn't prepared tonight, but this is this project needs a lot more study than you guys are being given. And my great fear for this town, and I'll say it again when it goes back to town council, is that you're rushing this. You're rushing a square peg through a round hole. I wish you guys a lot of luck. This is a tough project. That being said, I would I would ask the town now and at a later date, change the rules and then see what offers you get. But this just feels like you're changing everything for this one project. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Zev, you're up.
Hi, everyone. Zeb Meyerowitz, 12 Hill Way. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yeah.
I I want to reiterate Dr. Hobics's comment. You know, he personally, I personally, and I'm sure other actual members of the community that have tried to go through the process of developing the town. I can't I can't help but feel a complete sense of frustration with the planning board from what I've seen and observed during this process due to the complete staccatic nature of how submissions are treated when when coming from a a small business owner that's community minded versus a large developer. I mean, I I I most of you on this board were a part of my most recent submission to the town. And just the sheer opposition I got to a conforming submission, you know, was was very, very frustrating. And to hear, you know, you know, that we're holding special workshops and repeat processes and considerations of changing the zoning. You know, I I too had to encounter the same sources and uses challenges when putting through my building. And at the same time, you know, there was there was no such conversation and no such opportunity to even have, you know, uses applied to the building that may benefit the town. And so you know, I I I just want it to be heard that the amount of disappointment that I feel as as a member of this community, when in that in that complete separation of treatment is is very frustrating. That being said, observing this, I would strongly urge the planning board, whatever language that you do propose, you absolutely cannot word it in a way that makes it apparent that it it only benefits one lot and can portray any potential to take market share from adjacent buildings or value from adjacent buildings and provide that to the developer because that that will be easily portrayed as a spot zoning ordinance. And I'm sure that any any member of this community that's had to go through the process that I have, you know, would would take personal offense to that. And this has happened before. The planning board has done this in the past with other buildings in the area, and it's not not relevant to mention names. But, you know, I just want it to be heard just how disappointed I am in observing this process. Thank you.
Thank you, Zev. Anybody else's hand up? Going once. Going twice. Okay, I'll close the public comment. I guess the next thing I'd like to do, the next thing I had on my list was to start diving into the nuts and bolts. But I saw the email that Maureen sent today. I think, Dan, you suggested this the senior or affordable housing development you saw down in Dover, New Hampshire. Can you give us does this? Does that apply at all to what we're doing or?
No. It's it's just an example, kind of kind of going down a little bit about what Andrew was talking about. And about, you know, is there something we can do either in the town center or outside of the town center? I mean, that really appealed to me that it was very, very interesting, but it's it's such a different concept to what's being shown before us. So I don't know. I mean, Maureen, if you have any comments on that also, but it's very different. So but I but it appealed to me. That's why I sent it to her.
Did everybody have a chance to read that today? That that email that Maureen sent out today? Well, if you haven't, it's probably not the time now to really delve into it, but.
It was. Yeah, it was very different. I mean, these were tiny little individual eight hundred square foot cottages, basically, kind of around a town center. And.
I think they're like four hundred square feet or something like that.
Yeah, very extremely small one bedroom units, but it's very appealing. So I just thought I would send that to Maureen and just see what she thought about that. But.
Okay, so, okay, right now, you don't want to pursue it any further or?
I I don't know how that would work.
Yeah, I don't either.
I don't know how it would work, Jim, other than, you know, going back to what Andrew suggested. Is there? I, I don't know how it would work, Jim, other than, you know, going back to what Andrew suggested. Is there something we can do? Outside of the town center. I mean, I, I'm, I'm, I'm interested in talking about that. So, I mean, I am, but.
Okay, I know, Maureen, you looked at, uh, you, in your memo, you talked about the residency being really the only place that you could put affordable. Beside the town center because it has public water and public sewer, right?
Yeah, so, I mean, the, just so you're clear, I, I got Dan's memo end of day yesterday. And that's why what you got was very, very late in the day today, and I certainly didn't expect everyone to be able to read it. Um, but it, it was, I think it was, uh, not something you would see in a town center. It, and it is anticipated in the town's comprehensive plan. It was called cottage housing. But it's the kind of thing you would really put in a residential district. And so, uh, Mr. Gilbert has said, you know, why are we doing town center? Maybe we can put it in a residential district. And so I, I spent, uh, you know, like a rapid learn on this, on this real life example. Because, I mean, we look at real life examples because it's a good test of our theory of what our zoning requirements are. That's why we apply it to a specific project. And, and in this project, and again, it's, it's not unlike what was anticipated in the comp plan for cottage housing. I, I just think it is important to know that, um, I really, I don't think it's an unreasonable statement to make. That if you want affordable housing in Cape Elizabeth, anywhere in Cape Elizabeth, you're gonna have to be willing to make. Dramatic changes to your zoning. And that project, if you were gonna put it in Cape, would have, would probably be in the RC district. Um, they, in order to get the approval in Dover, they quadrupled the zoning density allowed where it was built. And so anywhere you want to put in affordable housing. If you really want to put in affordable housing, you're gonna have to look at zoning changes and the comp plan anticipated that. Um, this project in Dover, four times the, the zoning. Uh, in Cape, you would probably have to go to a density of no more than one, one unit for every five thousand square feet. Which is the number that Jeff Levine referenced in the presentation you heard on the Metro Coalition. And the density in the RC district is what, is twenty thousand square feet for one unit. So you, you really do have to look at, you know, enormous, not enormous, but more than just tweaking. In order to get affordable housing, get things to the point where you can take advantage of, of the financing that's available. Uh, the other point is that project was, uh, three hundred and sixty-eight square foot, single buildings. Um, and they were gonna be charging nine hundred and fifty dollars, um, a month for renting them. So those are interesting metrics to think about, um, and related to the project that's in front of you. And there's now three little blue hands waving, so.
Carol Anne, Carol Anne's up.
Uh, I just, so what tack do we want to take? We can pull back and look at affordable housing overall for the town of Cape Elizabeth. We can focus on just affordable housing in the town center. Or we can focus on town center regs related to. Uh, you know. Broadening them in some way, it overall, and not just focus on affordable housing. Those are three things I heard tonight.
Okay. Uh, Andrew.
Yeah, uh, thanks. I, I mean, I, I appreciated what Dan said. I was able to kind of skim it at the end of the day. Um, that was the kind of thing I was thinking about. I mean, to be honest, um. This whole conversation about, you know, how we got here is a bit cart before the horse because of things, you know, we, we haven't. Been spurred on to have this larger conversation about affordable housing in the town. You know, no Band-Aid has been given, passed down to us about that, and we haven't sort of taken it on a side project. And when I sort of suggested that, um, I think it was the last meeting, it was sort of really meant to be like, you know, maybe we should have a side project of thinking about. Where else in town should we be thinking about putting affordable housing? Clearly, the town is in favor of it. Almost every letter is like, hey, that's a great idea. But now you're having to change all these things that everybody spent so much time thinking about. And, you know, to me, that feels like a, a lot more comfortable process, like thinking about that, actually doing planning for it. Um, I, I'm not opposed to greatly increasing density if it means like you can, you can fit affordable housing. Uh, development in, in, uh, zone C or whatever. Um, but, you know, it makes me incredibly uncomfortable to then have to talk about changing five ordinances that were, you know. Hopefully, thoughtfully, um, come up for the town center. And so that's my struggle anyway. Um, and I, and I think I would like to see that, that sort of side project. Done because I think it would be helpful to kind of, you know, then the, the horse, the horses before the cart instead of the other way around.
Okay, thank, thanks, Andrew. Jonathan?
Yeah, just, uh, I, I'm agreeing with Andrew on this because it's, it's difficult for me to ignore this project that's in front of us. And then when we keep talking about it, um, we then get feedback from the developer who then indicates like, oh, well. If you, if you guys make us do this, we won't be able to do that. And I know that, that it's good feedback to get because we can understand it. But as Andrew just said, I would much rather be able to talk about this broad concept of affordable housing. And go through a wish list on what we would like to see for affordable housing in this town. And then really hope that a project will come along that will fit within these guidelines. And I do think that it is, it might be necessary, as Maureen just said, that we're gonna have to make some changes to allow affordable housing. Because it does provide a substantial public benefit. Um, but at the same time, just kind of going off this on a whim and trying to, as one of the public comments that was just made, trying to fit a round peg into a square hole. Is a little bit difficult for me. And, um, and I really think that we are trying to do it for a particular project. When we as a planning board should be looking at this, you know, at a larger level. Um, one of the big comments that we continually hear, and I, I will credit the developer for making these changes. And adding some single or some, uh, two bedroom units when they were all single family, uh, originally. But is this, okay, if we want to create affordable housing, um, we want to create it for families. We want to create it, uh, for that opportunity. So if we were making a wish list of this, would we say that any affordable housing development has fifty percent? Multi, uh, bedroom dwellings along those lines? I don't know. Um, but it is a conversation that we basically can't even have. When we are trying to tailor this discussion towards the one development in front of us and the one application in front of us. And I just don't think that that to me is how we should be crafting this conversation.
Okay.
Great.
Yeah, all good points. Um, me, I think the town center to me is the only place. That we could practically fit affordable housing because of its proximity. To the IGA, to other services, to the schools, if there are some families that live in there. Because maybe we change some, uh, ordinances in the ours, our, uh, RC district. But the people would still need a car to get to where they're going. There's no bus service. So with all that, I think, uh, whatever we decide with, to me, it's, it's a town center district or it's not gonna happen. Because I don't think it's practical. Um, we also need to keep in mind, it's been, I'm not sure I'm saying it right, that, uh. The first floor retail, retail has changed radically over the last few years. And, uh, we've already heard from people who try to fill those spaces that it's tough to do. So, uh, you know, that's something that we're, you know, we have another list to talk about tonight. Obviously, I said something that annoyed somebody. I liked, like, all these hands rate came up.
Or, or they agreed with you.
Oh, I know. Andrew, go ahead.
Mine was still up, Jim. Mine was still up.
Andrew.
Um, yeah, I, I will politely, politely disagree a little bit with that, only, only in so much as. You know, actually in conversation with a colleague of mine today, works in young professional who. You know, frankly, when I told her what the one bedroom cost was for the low income housing, she's like, I couldn't afford that. But she has a car, she commutes to our office, she goes to the grocery store elsewhere. You know, um, I think my point is actually that it, it kind of needs more study. It's not. And I totally agree. I think it makes the most sense. I mean, obviously, you know, sewer and water for one, don't go far outside of the town center. So these are necessarily probably gonna be, you know, closer to the town center. And I think it makes all the sense in the world for it to be closer. But I think, you know, looking at all the available space and distance to the schools and stuff, it, I think it just needs more study. And I, I, I don't think, I, I'm kind of doubting town center is the only place this could happen because this, that's a fairly small area. And there's actually, you know, residential zones that are just, just outside of the town center that are definitely still in walking distance. Um, so I, I don't think we should, you know, sort of rush to judgment that town center is the only place. Um, I, I, it would, and I think it would really take study and maybe that's even like the town hiring an outside. Firm to do like a, a full-on study, whether that's economics of like, how much could? You know, like basically kind of what the developer's done, right? How much would it, would it cost to build these things? How much could we get from the state for the units? How, you know, what does land cost need to be to, to make this happen? Do we have that land? I mean, maybe it does come back to like, there's only one parcel in the entire town. Um, you know, but I just think it needs more study and I think we can't just say, it can't exist outside of the town center.
How would you study it? What would you do?
I don't study these things, so I, I couldn't exactly tell you, but I, I'm sure it would probably be both sort of a mapping exercise, a real estate exercise and economics exercise. Um, you know, it, you know, it's probably a lot of things, like I said, the developers doing, but we're thinking about it on, on a, more of a townwide basis.
Okay, Mary Ann.
Jim, I raised my hand because I agreed with you. Um, I've lived in Cape Elizabeth for thirty-seven years. This is, I think, the first proposal I've ever seen. And, you know, we hear a lot about people saying they're for affordable housing, but when you drill down into the, um. Questions that were asked of people during the comp plan, what you quickly see is that the, almost fifty percent of the people. In Cape Elizabeth are opposed to any development ever. Um, so I think there's an opportunity here. It's only going to happen in the town center. It's not going to happen in some of the closer residential districts. Um, and, uh, I, the, it seems to me that the current town center ordinance is itself. A failure. All you have to do is look at all of the empty space. I don't see, uh, a clamor for development. Um, I think the requirement to have commercial on the first floor is often inconsistent with what people want. Living above. Nobody wants to live above a pub or a pizzeria. Um, you know, it sounds good to think, oh, we can go into our town center and go to a pub and have a glass of wine or go to a pizza place. But frankly, people aren't going to want apartments above those areas. And at the same time, we have a lot of empty space, which suggests to me that, uh, the town center ordinance is itself not working. So I would like to focus, uh, on seeing what we can do to, um. Have something that really is a public benefit and bringing thirty-nine, uh, potentially thirty-nine or thirty-six. Units of affordable housing is to me a public benefit. Uh, but I don't want to rush it. I don't know that we can get this done by April. Um, but I think that we ought to be looking at this proposal because it's the only one that's come before the town in, God knows, forty years. There used to be affordable housing. I bought my first house in Elizabeth Park for fifty thousand dollars. And I think those houses now are selling for four hundred thousand. So, um, you know, we, we need to do something. The, the, the town, um, speaks. Uh, with a lot of liberal thoughts, but. What we have done has been very conservative in our approach and it's, it's really time that we. Have some, uh, more diverse housing, which will bring more diversity to the people in this town.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Al. Al?
Uh, yep. I, I think I'm in the same sphere as Andrew and, and Jonathan. But a couple other points. We talk about affordable housing, but there's different levels of affordable housing. I believe Nathan's proposal is at sixty percent of AMI. There's sixty percent AMI, eighty percent AMI, a hundred percent AMI. So the discussion on affordable can have a considerable variation in. What level is affordable, what demographics are being served, and what are the price points? Overall, density is a big issue in Cape that I think indirectly affects affordability. Um, the minimum half acre zoning in the RC district, uh, limits the number of homes that can be built. The greater you can in, increase inventory, the more pricing can be affected. Um, and then relative to Mary Ann's points about residential over commercial. Our Virginia office was within a new town center in the county that our office was located. There was residential above our office use. There was a residential above the restaurant uses and a small grocery. Uh, they had no issues leasing those spaces, um, above the commercial, uh, from the residential side. And I believe the, the Rosemont Market has been successful in having condominiums above it. Um, so I think they can be complementary uses, um, if done appropriately. Um, and I think all of that would, would have an impact on, um, how we look at the town center.
Okay. Well. Water is muddy. Um. What I had planned for tonight, I'm not sure we can even get close. Here's what I had, here's what I had planned was. Get close to a final, you know, not finalized, but get close to a final draft of the amendments. Provide information to Maureen so she could start drafting a letter that would accompany the amendments. And then, uh, schedule public hearing for April twentieth and table what we're talking about. Work on it at the workshop in April and then we will talk about it again at the, uh, April meeting. And after everything going on tonight, I don't know. Um, I guess we can keep. To me, the hardest thing is we need to make a decision about the first floor commercial. And we go back and forth and back and forth and we've heard. It's said that if we demand that, then it's not gonna happen. Um, and we do know there's some empty spaces in town. Um, I don't know. I'm going back and forth right now. I. I would, I had my, my thoughts all set and then with everything, the water's muddy. Al, you got your hand up.
I don't know if Maureen knows about the project, but the South Portland Housing Authority. Is currently under construction at six eleven Main Street in South Portland. I believe there's forty-two to forty-eight units of affordable housing. Over seven thousand square feet of commercial. I don't know any particulars relative to what they're doing on leasing. I quickly looked at it while we're sitting here. It looks like. Um, the commercial spaces for lease. But I didn't know if, if we were gonna do any research projects, if Maureen could potentially discuss that project. And how they were making the financing work. Um, because that to me seems very similar to what the town was looking for in the, in the town center district.
I guess Maureen and Nathan, do either of you know anything about that project or Kristen or Robert?
I don't know much about it. Um, I guess I would just point out that that's, that's on Main Street in South Portland, uh, which I believe is Route One there. And so there's, it's a much different kind of commercial environment than, than, uh, the town center of Cape Elizabeth. It's busier. There's a lot more cars that drive by there. So to me, just at first blush, it looks to me like a much more viable commercial location. Than something in the in the Cape Elizabeth Village Center that's set so far back from the road.
Okay, thank you. Jamie.
Thanks, Jim. I I wasn't planning to speak again, but I I just want to leap onto the example that you just started off with, the. One of the requests being the the waiver of the first floor retail requirement. So. Again, I'm not part of the planning board. You know, not not my job to necessarily. Think in this way, but I think if I was to use that as an example where to to come back to this whole questionability, the question of both feasibility and consistency. You know, if you think about a lot like this, where there's there's four developable lots within the overall site. Two of which, you know, one of which i- is moving forward with a commercial purpose on the first floor, the other of which envisions solely a commercial purpose with potentially nothing else to it. I think when you think about that question of consistency and spirit, you know, it is that enough of an overall contiguous development? Where, you know, you then get to the point of saying, okay, well. I I don't I don't know how the I don't know how the wording would be, you know, drafted in an ordinance, but. A certain percentage of all of that equals commercial space and and again, you're. You've got an example that's consistent with. The overall intent of of previous town center. Ordinance. Does that make sense? Like?
I think so.
I I I think I think where where the town council is probably going and certainly where where my mind immediately goes to is. I think as I tried to articulate before. You know, putting guardrails around what's drafted such that it it doesn't envision. You know, a whole bunch of. Mushrooming on other on other properties or sites or things like that. But if you if you think about this in totality of what this entire development is. You know, what what impact does that have to what gets drafted? So it's it's just a thought I had because you were bringing up the specific first floor retail requirement, but.
Thank you, Jamie. Jonathan?
Yeah, so to me, I I and I have to just kind of put this current application that we've been asked to discuss aside. How I look at, to me, how we should approach this is, what do we want to, because we recognize. Affordable housing as a public benefit. I mean, one, how do we define public or how do we define? Affordable housing exactly? And what do we want from that affordable housing? Something like I mentioned, do we want it to be single bedroom, double bedroom? I I personally would probably be okay if giving an exception to the commercial. Real estate on the front on the or sorry, not commercial, non residential space on the first floor. But with that said, I would not be approving a height change in giving an extra floor. Because I don't think that that would be in the spirit of what the town center is going with height requirements. Um, I was willing to do the height requirement change to give the to have an applicant. Who might want to put three floors of affordable housing above a commercial space, but to me, it's almost like you don't get both. It's one or the other. Commercial space with an extra extra floor or no commercial space. But you get, you don't get that height. So that's sort of how I am envisioning where this was going, because then that would be consistent. With the other properties in town that haven't been afforded that opportunity to go higher. So that I think we have to kind of have a discussion as a board on what we want to see in affordable housing. Amendment look like outside of the idea of this applicant and and what's here. And I I know that's troubling probably for the applicant who's put a lot of time and money. Into this effort. At the same time, though, I think that that's really to me where the the conversation. Should be going. What do we as a board want to see for for people who want to provide a public benefit? But as Maureen has told us, we'll have to go outside of what the town center zoning is at this time. And as Mary Ann said, maybe this is just something that the town council really needs to take on. Outside of this whole project or this whole thing that we're going through right now is whether or not they need to look at town center zoning. As a policymaker as opposed to us as looking at a particular project.
Thank you. Andrew.
So I was thinking about what Jamie said, and I mean, I think it's an interesting idea and I I totally get the. Idea, the concept of sort of, you know, thinking about what what amount of square face, square space could exist, say, in commercial. On first floor, if you had four develop, four lots, say, they were each five thousand, that's, you know, twenty thousand square feet. If one could, you know, if basically that that whole development could be, you know, all the commercials in one building, that's twenty thousand. Square feet or whatever, you know, just using that example. That that being sort of like the idea. However, in this case, this developments. Are even put in place with with, you know, under the current ordinances. I don't I don't think, Maureen, that we could really stipulate something like. You know, lot four must have all commercial in it. I mean, is that even a possibility?
Well, I think we need to remember that. None of this discussion is talking about public property.
Right.
We're all, there's no public property that's being offered to a developer and asking them to provide a proposal. So when you're talking the town center or where you're talking residential districts, you're waiting for. A private property owner to say, ooh, 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 I want to be the one that does this. And, you know, they're not. So. That's the first piece. The second piece is these and and because these lots have been approved and they've been approved under zoning, so. Uh, you can't just go back and tell them they have to do something different. If they ask you for zoning changes, then then you have opened the gates to some negotiation. But they have already been approved as as commercial as as they've already been approved as lots. Yeah, that they're right now, they're approved lots. They can come in and submit a site plan application for uses that are currently allowed. The board can't retroactively go back and say you have to do X.
Okay, I got a question, something Al mentioned. Nathan, Nathan, Kristen, Robert. I'm fairly ignorant in the world of affordable housing and Al used the term sixty percent. And eighty AMI, eighty percent and a hundred percent. And you're proposing sixty percent, correct, Nathan?
Right, right.
How do your metrics change if you go eighty to a hundred? I I don't know if you can even answer that.
No, we can definitely answer that because it's right in our wheelhouse. The big, the big effect of going to eighty or a hundred would, well, there there would be two big effects. One is. That we would lose all of the affordable housing tax credits that you get for building housing for people at sixty percent or below. AMI, area median income. You don't, there there currently is no program available with tax credits or anything like that for. People earning eighty or a hundred percent. So that would be a huge hit to our budget. Not only do you lose the the equity that investors will pay for those tax credits, but you also lose subsidy that goes along with them from the Maine State Housing Authority. What you get in, what you, the benefit would be you could charge more rent because people who are at eighty or a hundred percent of area median income have higher incomes, so they can afford a higher rent. But the higher rent that you can charge would not even come close to making up the loss of equity and subsidy. Which is why frankly, we're proposing them at sixty percent. Not at eighty percent or a hundred percent, because that's how we can make the numbers work. And we also like serving people in that. Lower, you know, lower end of the wage scale because they're underserved typically. So while developers can can put prep units in at eighty percent or a hundred percent when they're doing. High end rentals, they can mix in those, that's what sometimes called inclusionary zoning, where you mix in some eighty percent or a hundred percent units. Or if you're doing condos, you can mix in some units that are lower priced condos to try to hit that eighty percent or a hundred percent of median target. Um, but that's that's very different than what we're what we're proposing. We're not doing condos. And we're not doing high end market rate rentals. We're doing sort of middle, middle of the road. In terms of fit and finish and cost to try to serve kind of middle income people. So that's a longer answer maybe than you wanted, but if we tried to serve sixty, tried to serve eighty and a hundred percent people in our projects, the project would be become infeasible.
Okay, all right. Good to know. I want to try and move this off dead center. All great comments tonight and I I thank everybody for that. Very thoughtful. Maureen had given us two options of amendments. One, the difference between the two. Is one, as I remember, is the requirement for first floor commercial. I mean, there's no requirement for a short commercial in one of them and there is in the other. Correct, Maureen?
Correct.
All right. I'm going to call on each one of you. I want to know if you're. Leaning towards. Eliminating the requirement for first floor commercial or not, so we can at least decide if we're gonna. And if you all, if enough people want first floor commercial, we need to know that. All right, so we don't waste our time. So, Mary Ann.
Jim, can I, there's another hand from, I think, one of the applicants.
Oh, Robert, go ahead. Sorry. Thank you, Jonathan. Robert, are you are you on? Are you muted?
Can you hear me now? Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes. I I I just wanted to comment on the feasibility of of the retail space. First of all, with another hat on, I'm involved as one of the companies, it's a sister company to Zen Company, is the manager of Poncove. And we managed that 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 Poncove for many, many years and we are really struggling to try to fill up. The this vacant space that's in Poncove right now. And I just got an email also from Josh Bention, who spoke earlier. And he had spoken to Brandon Mitchell, who's the leasing agent for the South Portland project. And they cannot find any tenants for that space right now. Retail is is struggling in so many different ways right now and a lot of those ways don't have to do with, you know, where they're located in the town of Cape Elizabeth. A lot of them have to do with the fact that people have changed the way they shop. And they, you know, the traditional small retail shop in the store is just in a really. Difficult place right now and really struggling. It's no matter where you are, no matter where you're located, you can be in Times Square. It's just almost impossible and very difficult to get viable retail right now.
Thank you, Robert. Appreciate it.
Sure thing.
I guess I I, as I've done before in these questions, I always go first. If I'm going to make everybody else answer the question, I need to do it too. So I am in favor of getting rid of the first floor commercial for affordable housing. Projects with the, you know, depending what the other, what else we're doing, we're going to change, but in general. I'm okay with not having first floor commercial slash retail. So Jonathan. Yeah, I know, I'm good. I said Mary Ann first, but you're, you moved around on my screen, so now you're right there top left, so.
All right, so I am still in favor of keeping the commercial space. Um, but I am, and and again, not to muddy the waters, but I would be willing to give an extra floor. In exchange for keeping that commercial space, I would be in favor of getting rid of that commercial space, but I would not be in favor of increasing the height requirement if we give, get rid of that commercial space.
Okay, thank you. Carol Ann.
Uh, I said before, I would not be opposed to getting rid of the commercial space. Because. I do not, I do not want to see it go, any building go to five stories in order to support.
Okay, Daniel.
I I'm in favor of keeping the commercial space. And throwing this back on the developer, is there any other way that you can make this project work financially? I mean, you talked about.
Here, can I interrupt here? I I'm sorry. We are discussing the ordinance as we are not discussing the submission of a project. And the developer has provided all kinds of awesome information for us in order to think about this. But they should not be part of this discussion.
Yep. Thank you, Carol Ann.
Oh, so Jim, again, I'm in favor of keeping the commercial space. Thank you.
Okay. Al.
I'm in favor of keeping it. I'm an engineer, so I read things somewhat literal. The order from the council. Requests zoning amendments permitting unaffordable housing project. And currently as drafted. The ordinance option two allows for doubling of the density. It allows an additional story or ten feet. It allows doubling the footprint. And it allows flexibility on parking. All of those items to me. Meet the definition of what the council is asking so that it it allows unaffordable housing project. Whether it allows this affordable housing project is for the developer to determine. So I would keep the first floor non residential space.
Okay, Andrew. Thank you, Al.
I think I'm I'm for keeping the commercial. I actually like Jonathan's thought that essentially you can. Trade one or the other, but not have both in terms of raising up. Versus commercial.
Okay, thank you. Mary Ann.
I am in favor of eliminating the commercial space in the manner that. Uh, had been presented to us by Maureen. That is a narrowly tailored. Amendment that applies to lots that are or developments that are two hundred feet back from the road. I think we determined last. Uh, month when we talked about this, that that would apply to about four lots in the town center. So I would. Support getting rid of the commercial requirement for those lot, those developments that are set way back.
Thank you. So the way I see that is for for members of the board want to keep the first floor commercial, three members of board are willing to discuss getting rid of it. So unless somebody's, unless I'm misreading this, then we would be wasting our time trying to get talk, continue discussion on first floor commercial. Is that the consensus?
Yes.
Right?
Oh, Jim, I mean, I think you heard from myself and I think it was Andrew who said that we'd be willing to discuss it, but. Without the caveat that we they be able to go up another ten feet. So I don't, I don't know where that leaves us, but. Again, it's it's very difficult when it's an applicant that needs all these things and that wouldn't fit to what that applicant needs. So I don't know where that leaves us, but.
Wait a minute.
You about to say something, Mary Ann?
Yeah, I I guess for the purposes of moving forward, I would suggest then that we. Continue to discuss option two and set option two for a public hearing. It's not, it's not the option I like, but I, when I served on the council, I could learn to count to four, so. Let's set option two to public hearing.
Worst thing that happens is it comes back to us and we have to go over again.
Does anybody have a problem with that? I mean, I know you said Jonathan, but. Yeah. Because obviously I don't know the numbers, but enough of the developers have said they need to have meet certain metrics or it's not affordable, so. I guess we can have first floor residential, but the billing not high enough. And maybe another developer can come in. Okay. So, but I, based on what we've heard, I don't think it's going to happen. We can, we can move forward with option two and discuss it some more at the next workshop, if everybody's willing to do that.
Bye.
All right. So let's move on.
Jim, I think Mary Ann has her hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry, I just didn't lower it.
You got yellowed while through my screen, Mary Ann, so I can't see your hand up.
Well, I just lowered it.
Okay. Go ahead, Dan.
Yeah, um, you, you know, getting back to the discussion about, and I, you know, really studying this and really not trying to get this done by the end of April. I mean, I'm, I'm in favor right now of, of, of really kind of looking at this ordinance and talking about what, what our ordinances need to look like for affordable housing. I don't know, I just, it just feels like this is, in, in my opinion, it just feels so rushed. I mean, I, I think, I, I, so, you know, I, I just think by April thirtieth is going to be very difficult to get this done. That's my opinion.
How would more time make you change your mind, though?
Doing what I, you know, I, I sent, Jim, I sent that to, to Maureen and she sent that, that concept. You know, taking a look, and I know that this developer's done a great job putting this all together and I don't know, I mean, I, I, I just think that, that we just need to just spend more. It's a hard question to answer. You know, I'm not an expert in affordable housing, but I don't know, that's just my opinion, so.
Jonathan.
Jim, just, I mean, for the purposes of tonight, I, I would agree that we just move this on to the next one, but I do have a question for Jamie, if he's willing to answer. At what point Jamie will, or would the town council be willing to take on this idea that we've been batting around tonight about changing the zoning and affordable housing and what the wish list for the council would be, or something along those lines? I, I think that, to me, that's where this should be headed in the direction towards of the, the town council making some decisions. And obviously, I know, it, just like you have done with numerous other zoning amendments, like for instance, the short-term rental that we were just working on, that it does come to us and we give you our thoughts and then we give you, and then it sends back to you. But I mean, it's, the town council has an appetite to take this on sort of separate from this application, a specific application, I should say.
Um, yeah, I mean, if I think back to the development of the comprehensive plan and, and approval of that update, you know, in twenty nineteen, heading into early twenty twenty, you know, we had developed a work plan with all of the recommendations that came out of the, the, the comprehensive plan. And, you know, we had looked at what were some of the sort of near, medium and long-term things. And, and my recollection on that, Maureen was intimately involved in that process of, of sort of taking all of those recommendations and turning them into action items is that there wasn't something that specifically associated with affordable housing that came out of that in the same way that short-term rentals did, right? Of addressing that as a problem. But, you know, I think, I think the council took the information from the comprehensive plan to say focusing on the need to both diversify the type of housing and, and ensuring availability of a diverse pool of housing stock as well as, you know, increasing the actual number of affordable housing units was something that mattered to the community, was something that was outlined in the comprehensive plan. But like I said, I'm not, I'm not sure that associated specific action items were put to it in the same way as maybe some other things. That's number one. Number two, I think that, as, as you guys have hit on and others have talked about in the discussion, that, you know, this is a bit of a chicken and egg situation where, you know, with, with all due respect to, you know, some of the others who spoke earlier about being critical of their own developments and past processes and things like that, I, I, I think is Mary Ann said, certainly in my recollection, and I haven't lived here as long, I've lived here twenty years, but, you know, I don't remember anybody ever bringing forward a proposal of this type with this specific, you know, type of proposal and public benefit and all that kind of thing. And I don't think it's the planning board's job, yours or, or fast planning boards to, when somebody comes forward with a proposal, say, well, if you did this, then it would have a public benefit and maybe there'd be some flexibility. I think the planning board and the council react to the proposals that are brought before them and judge them on those merits and, 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 you know, that's generally how the process works. Going back to your question, though, Jonathan, I, I certainly think that there's interest and appetite on the part of the council for, and it, you know, is built into our goal plan that we just adopted on Monday, which, you know, while I don't think it specifically calls out affordable housing, talks about, you know, being focused on issues of, of equity and, and so on and so forth, that, you know, past councils haven't probably looked at quite as hard, because the, the, the need wasn't as present as it seems to be now, so. Does that answer your question? I don't know.
No, that's great, thank you. That's helpful.
Well, do we want to send this back up to the town council and say, give us more specific direction? I don't know if that's the right way to say it, instead of trying to come up with our own?
Jim, to me, I, I think this is a policy decision that the town council has to make, I just, I don't know, that's what I thought.
I can see it. Instead of beating ourselves up about the specifics of the ordinance changes. Yeah, but what would that direction look like? Come up with affordable housing, it would still come back and come up with amendments to make affordable housing, right?
Well, Jim, it might look like something like, I mean, there's been a lot of discussion about the fact that it sounds like commercial space isn't always working in these buildings. So it's probably a broader look at like, you know, maybe the town center plan, even though I'm looking at it now, adopted in twenty fourteen, didn't really hit the mark, maybe, maybe. I don't know, I'm not a commercial developer, but I mean, there could be some, you know, survey of, of commercial developers or something that could at least look at like, why, why wouldn't you want to develop here? What would it need, how would it need to look to, to make it more interesting? And then say, say it's like, well, we really need, we need X, Y or Z, I don't know. And then what does the town look, town center look like? What space is available? These are the other goals that we want to achieve, including affordable housing. What would that look like? Maybe we don't need commercial space and everything. I mean, it, it would really be much better if the town, if the, the council, because this is a policy issue, to come back and say, these are really what, what we need to change. You guys just need to craft it narrowly so that it, it sounds good and works. I, I feel like this is going round and round on, on something that doesn't make sense really right now for the board to do. I mean, that's my opinion, and I think it's sort of what Jonathan's saying, to be honest.
Well, I don't know, do we want to table it tonight and, and table it and go to the workshop? I guess we could schedule for April, the April meeting, Maureen?
So it sounds like you have four people who are more comfortable with option two. So I, with, I mean, just trying to end the misery for tonight. Perhaps someone could make a motion to table option two to the January, to the April twentieth meeting for a public hearing, because eventually you have to hold a public hearing and you have to send a recommendation to the council. So there's nothing that says you can't hold more than one public hearing, but it makes sense to at least let the public comment on a specific proposal and then you can decide what you're going to do with their comments. And then you can also table it to the April sixth workshop. And I intend to have a draft companion piece ready for you to look at that you can start to edit. And there are several other items that look like they're going to be in that workshop, so you won't be spending a lot of time on this item anyway.
All right, Al, you have your hand up. Thank you, Maureen.
Just one question from Maureen, and it really doesn't need an answer tonight, just for her to consider. Under the affordable housing in a mixed-use building, it defines it as at least thirty-six units. And then under the parking, it defines it as at least seventy percent of the units. Would you want those to be defined the same way? And if not, why not?
I think those, I mean, those, first of all, the definition of the affordable housing in a mixed-use building is, is history now, because that's not included in the second option, so we don't have to.
No, it is, it still is. It is on the one I have.
Right, the option to delete that definition change, because you don't need it, because a mixed-use building wouldn't be, need a definition change, because you would not have, you would not be deleting that first-floor non-residential use. And the seventy percent and the thirty-six doesn't have to match. Those, there's no magic to those numbers. The intent was to try to quantify what you would consider substantial enough to amend your zoning ordinances. And if you're going to amend your ordinances because you want to promote affordable housing, I'm assuming you want to get a lot of affordable housing and, and you don't want someone to just throw in one unit and be able to take advantage of all of this. So there's no magic to those numbers and there, there's nothing that says they have to match.
Okay. All right.
So.
Oh, I would move, can I make a motion?
Yes, you may.
I would move that we set option two, which has the support of four planning board members to a public hearing. On what date was it you suggested, Maureen?
It's the last page of the memo you received, that's page two of the memo, and it's April twentieth, twenty twenty-one.
April twenty, okay. That's my motion. Second.
Maureen, please call and roll.
Mr. Bedensky.
Yes.
Mr. Gilbert.
Yeah.
Ms. Jordan.
Yes.
Ms. Lynch.
Yes.
Mr. Palmer.
Yes.
Mr. Sarbeck.
Yes.
Chair Hubner.
Yes, the motion passes unanimously.
And before we table this, I would like to ask Maureen if she can prepare a brief history or record of affordable workforce, low-income housing in Cape Elizabeth in the last fifty years, including how many actual proposals have been made?
Okay.
Thank you.
We have a motion to table.
So moved.
Are you tabling it to the workshop?
Uh, yes. April sixth workshop. Option two. Second.
I guess, I, I have one question.
Jim, we already vote on this?
Oh, never mind.
Well, we voted on a public hearing.
What were your concerns, Mary Ann?
Um, I guess I'm wondering whether we should just have the public hearing now. I don't know how much more work we will get done in a workshop.
True.
And so I wonder if we shouldn't have the public hearing at the next, I guess I'd like to amend my motion, have the public hearing at the next meeting and then potentially have another workshop after we hear from the public.
Okay, Maureen, you had your hand up?
No, I, I mean, that's definitely a mo, a way forward.
Yeah, I can see that. Yeah, because you're right, we, we do, according to you, Maureen, we've got a lot of stuff already on the workshop. And we're probably, we're going to go round and round again, like what we've been doing, so.
So you want to, you want to put the public hearing at March sixteenth?
No, I guess we could leave the public hearing for that April date. I just don't see a reason for us to have a workshop on this again until we've had a public hearing.
Okay.
I, I, I don't.
I can agree with that.
To me.
Yeah. So we don't need a, a motion to table the workshops.
Okay. So I withdraw my motion.
All right. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Oh, no, we have, we have to talk about other things.
Can, can we let Jamie leave?
Yes, just.
Did Jamie send you a note and said, please let it say?
No, he should be as miserable as the rest of us.
Yeah, exactly.
You forget it's budget week. So I just, I just want to thank you guys. You know, I reiterate, certainly wasn't the intent of the council to put you in a difficult position. I know that this is a tricky issue, as many can be, but thank you for the time and thoughtful consideration that you guys gave us tonight. I frankly enjoyed participating and hearing the discussion. It's useful, you know, for us for down the road. So I'd just as soon be a part of it than, than not. So thank you very much. If you, I, I'm completely available to anybody that wants to talk about it and has other questions, though, if, if anything comes up, so.
Thank you.
Appreciate you taking the time to be here.
Yeah, you bet. Take care, guys.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Wait, don't we have the other business thing?
No, I, it's not on there, I guess. Oh, we do have one question. If we ever get Zoom bombed, Maureen, do we have a procedure to follow? We don't have some cat?
Yeah, you, you've got, well, first of all, you know, it's a webinar, so there's a lot more control than a regular meeting. And the meetings are the ones that are more vulnerable to Zoom bombing. And then, yeah, this is why you, I look confused most of, confused most of the time, because I'm trying to be really careful about activating and promoting and, and, you know, de-moding and, you know, there's, I'm, I'm supposed to kill mics if people get out of, out of control, so.
Oh, no. Jonathan, watch out.
Any other questions or comments?
I think, I think that's the Carol Ann button. I think that's what that's called.
No, no, you guys are fine. It's, you know, folks from elsewhere.
All right. Do I motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Many seconds on that one.
All right, Mr. Bedensky.
Yes.
Mr. Gilbert.
Yes.
Ms. Jordan.
Yes.
Ms. Lynch.
Yes.
Mr. Palmer.
Yes.
Mr. Sarbeck.
Yes, and I, I will just also say thank you to all. This was a good discussion tonight and appreciate all you guys' insight.
And Chair Hubner.
Yes. And we'll.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, we'll see you.
Good night.
April sixteenth.
Good night.
All right.
Night.
Good night.